Good afternoon, everybody. Back in regular session, Mayor and City Council meeting 6:00 PM Thursday, March 23rd, 2023, City Hall Complex, Chamber Commerce, Council Chambers. Call this meeting to order. Can you please rise for the pleasure of allegiance? Madam Clerk?
I introduce to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for the invocation from the Church of Jesus Christ and Latter-day Saints. Elder Elry will deliver the invocation for his accom- and is accompanied by Elder Hagerty. Please. There was no call to the public, sir. Please state your name and address, and then go ahead and do the invocation, please.
Sure. I'm Elder Iyer from the Church of Jesus Christ of the Latter-day Saints. And you said address? I've only been here for about three weeks. 621 West Green Place. Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this opportunity to meet together to discuss the Doings of Nogales. Father, we know that you love the people here. Please, please be with us, and please be with the council as they counsel together and do their best to lead Nogales in the direction that it should go. Father, we thank thee for this beautiful place that we have to enjoy. Father, we thank thee for thy Son, Jesus Christ, who gives us all of these opportunities to govern ourselves under thy reign. Father, please let thy Spirit be here and guide, guide the people of Nogales closer to thee. Father, we say these things in the name of thy Son, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you. Now, we, no, no call to the public, right, Lethy? Thank you. Communications General, Proclamation, World Down Syndrome Day, which we actually celebrated on Tuesday due to the change of the meeting, but we're gonna do the proclamation. Ms. Montiel, can you please read it?
Yeah, just before I read it, Maria wanted to present some stuff. Do you want to do it right now or after the proclamation?
Yes, a little bit, por favor. Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Is this okay? Good afternoon, everybody. Thank you for having us again. I'm here with my family. My name is Maria Skolnik, and, and I am the coordinator for the Santa Cruz Parent-Love Connection, a support system for parents raising kids with special needs here in Santa Cruz County. So we were here Tuesday, and we had an amazing afternoon and evening together. Mr. Mayor and Council, Lisa Montiel and this chairman, I'm sorry, I didn't learn your name. Thank you very much to all of you who represent this, this government in Nogales, Arizona. So I wanted to share an experience with you this afternoon. That evening, I had the opportunity to meet a mother with a young child, and I had a conversation with her, and I learned that her daughter, very, very young, one-year-old, did not have services. So I spoke to her, and I took that information after we talked about the needs of the little child, and then I asked her permission to speak on her behalf with Division of Development of Disabilities here in Nogales, Arizona, and then she gave me permission. So I called the next day, and they promised me that they were going to contact her. So, and this is because of you, and because of the people that were here that afternoon, and some of them are here. So that's what is important, to connect with our community. As a special needs parent, I understand the mother. It is not easy. When I moved here with my daughter, with my family, I was pregnant with my daughter. I had five months pregnant. I was five months, five months pregnant, excuse me. And then I didn't know my baby was gonna be born with Down Syndrome. So when she was born, I was happy to be in Rio Rico because we were expecting a baby, and we're moving and arranging a new home and everything. Then when my daughter was born, I told my husband, I think it's time to pack up and go back to Tucson because we're gonna need it. But I was wrong because this community has, has given us what we never thought we were gonna get. It's not where you are, it's what you do. And a lot of people that I run into in Nogales, they have moved back to Tucson or other communities outside of the, this community, they told me, you should live here. You have a lot of resources here. But you know what? I'm happy I stay in Rio Rico because my community helped me and my husband to take care of our daughter and support all her needs. Now, that's why we do what we do, not only me, but all the parents as well. So I thank you very much to all of you because of you, that little baby is gonna have services. She's going to have services, and, and the services that she needs, and mom also is gonna have services. So I think we, we got a great deal with that event. Thank you very much. So really short, I would like to talk a little bit about World Down Syndrome Day. That's that event that we took place on Tuesday. So basically, World Down Syndrome Day is a global event. The, the community, the Down Syndrome community, families, not schools, everywhere, government, they celebrate. And then we take this day because March 21st, the number three, and then day 21. And that's what, it's a unique date because that's what happened to people with Down Syndrome. They have an extra chromosome, means instead of a pair, they have an extra one in pair number one, number 21. And three chromosomes in the pair number 21, and that's what makes, you know, this event special. So the United Nations, in 2011, the United Nations wanted to add the date to their calendar to, so everybody can celebrate World Down Syndrome Day. So that's what it is. So talking about Down Syndrome, Down Syndrome is not a disease, and it's not contagious. Down Syndrome is the most common genetic condition that happens according with, with ADC, and then it's, it's just, you know, amazing. It's amazing experience to raise a child with Down Syndrome. It's just a, it's a lesson every day. And I think I'm very proud that, you know, I can be here talking to people and letting them know, you know, what it is. And we're moving forward. We're making progress. More and more schools are integrating kids with Down Syndrome into general education classrooms and sport activities, and the community also is helping with that, and that's, that means a lot to us. Thank you very much. Thank you, everybody, for being here. Now, we, I wanted to tell you about the brochure, Lisa.
Yeah.
So this is the brochure for our organization, and my number and my email is in the back of the brochure for anyone who, if you meet anybody, that's the information they can use to contact us. And thank you for the car. It was really nice. Thank you, Mayor, for the car. And then we have few presents for Mr. Maldonado, Mayor, and Ms. Montiel, and Judy. So. Francine?
Miss?
Oh.
Oh, okay. Thank you. Very kind.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, mister. All of you, this appreciation for your continued support.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Turn right there. Council. Please. Stand up. Gracias a usted. Ms. Montiel, can you read the proclamation, please?
It's my honor. Proclamation, World Down Syndrome Day, whereas approximately one in every 800 children are born with Down Syndrome, representing, representing approximately 5,000 births per year in the United States. Whereas Down Syndrome is a naturally occurring chromosome arrangement that has always been a part of the human condition, exists in all regions across the globe, and commonly, and commonly results in variable effects of learning styles, physical characteristics, or health. Whereas people with Down Syndrome possess a wide range of abilities and are active participants in educational, occupational, social, and recreational circles of the community. Whereas recognizing the inherent dignity, worth, and valuable contributions of persons with intellectual disabilities as promoters of well-being and diversity of communities, and the importance of their individual autonomy and independence, including the freedom to make their own choices. Whereas March 21st, 2020, marks the fifteenth anniversary of World Down Syndrome Day. The date was selected by Down Syndrome International to signify the uniqueness of Down Syndrome in the triplication of the 21st chromosome and its use with Down Syndrome. Therefore, on November 1st, 2011, the United Nations General Assembly made a resolution to designate March 21st as Down Syndrome Day to observe every year beginning 2012. Whereas the United Nations has invited all member states, relative organizations of the United Nations system, and other international organizations, as well as civil society, including non-governmental organizations and the private sector, to observe World Down Syndrome Day in an appropriate manner in order to raise public awareness of Down Syndrome. Now, therefore, Mayor Maldonado, Mayor of the City of Nogales, do hereby proclaim March 21st to 2023 as World Down Syndrome Day. In the city of Nogales, Arizona, and encourage all citizens, business, public, and private agencies, media, religious, and educational institutions, to join us in promoting awareness of Down Syndrome. Sign, Mayor Maldonado.
Thank you. On behalf of the city, we share with you this proclamation. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
It wants to say something.
My name is Jack Skolnik. I'd like to say that doctors, when a lady is pregnant and first has her baby, they try to downplay everything and tell you, oh, this and that, and they try to let you know that you've got somebody that can't be educated, but that's not true. God gives you these children, and if you have to fight with the schools because they wanna put them all together, you have to fight. We've got to take our children and treat them, treat them like any other child. They're all capable of learning, Francine's, in college and everything else. She graduated with a three-point something in, in high school. And she wasn't in a, any, an unconcluded room. She was in an included room, although we had to go to court four times to get that. We've gotta change our school systems to where each child can be in a regular room. And we've got to inspire the parents of children with Down Syndrome to show them, all children can learn. That's my biggest concern. And along with your help in Nogales, we can do that. We just have to inspire the schools to, to teach the children, but they're not taught. And that's partially both the parent and the school system. I thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Maria. Francine, thank you. Item B, number one, discussion item. Discussion and/or, and/or direction to staff regarding community development, planning, and zoning. Councilman Bonilla?
Mayor, I make a motion to table this, this item.
Anybody? Okay. All in favor to the table?
Aye.
Post? Nate, I wanted to talk about. Wanted to make sure. Okay. Discussion item number two, discussion direction. Discussion direction and possible action, City of Nogales, Mayor Youth Ambassador Program presentation. Councilwoman Montiel?
Oh. Yeah. If Martha Armendaris can come up, please? I think we're gonna discuss the other issues ahead of it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You both have the floor. You can go ahead.
So, good evening, Mayor and Council, Councilmen and Councilwomen. Thank you for having us here. My name is Marco Baliano Choa.
And my name is Martha Sofia Armendaris.
And we're here to talk about the Nogales Youth Ambassador Program. So this program is designed to develop and strengthen personal and professional skills, and the Mayor's Youth, Youth Ambassador Program gives the opportunity to the youth to engage within their local communities and to provide them with the platform to contribute to the City of Nogales throughout a unique student experience.
Who serves on this committee? Students from our local Nogales High School will serve on this committee. There will be juniors and seniors. They'll be required to have a 3.0 cumulative GPA, and they'll have a maximum of five unexcused absences from school to be on the committee.
So the duties that embark with this position. So students will have to work on a project throughout the year focusing on distracted driving, substance abuse, and education. The ambassadors will participate and learn more about civic and political events. They must host one local event that is relevant to their project, and this event must be in collaboration with a local foundation and/or an organization to combat the problems facing the youth in Nogales, Arizona. And above everything, we, we pride ourselves on the community service. So each member will have to do five hours of community service a month and solicit 10, 10 hours from their peers.
For this project, the budget is, can include personalized t-shirts, bags, backpacks. Other expenses can include travel. Traveling can include going to the state capital to further benefit ambassadors by exposing them to politics at a state level, or they can also visit the League of Cities to bring further recognition to the City of Nogales.
So the timeline of this event and of this program will be that the application will be sent out to Nogales High School in August on behalf of the City of Nogales. They will also, then they will be due by September, and the, the mayor will select six ambassadors and set a meeting date by October, and this meeting will serve as an introduction to the, to the Nogales Youth Ambassador's Program and the responsibilities and the role that embarks with this position.
So the plan for this year, since we're starting a little late, is that we'll have, to start the program, we'll have three ambassadors, us two and another local, another student and another senior. And we will host a local event in collaborations with the Circles of Peace and Mariposa Community, Community Health Clinic to create awareness for distracted driving and substance abuse.
Thank you. That is all. If you have any questions, we'll be happy to take them out.
Anybody have any questions beside me?
Thank you so much for this opportunity, and, oh.
Okay. As you guys know, I've been working on this, you know, for, for the, you know, since I came into office, and, you know, Councilwoman Montiel has helped me, Judy has helped me. Basically, the awareness of trying to get youth involved in our community, and, you know, we go to, to conventions and everything. A lot of cities and states and towns have their ambassadors, you know, getting prepared for future politicians, support, you know, helps them on their school level and all that. In, in the back, there's an application, the, this application sample that they, that we keep up about and are wanting to do. This is the application that's gonna be sent out in August, and then, but, you know, these two students and the, the other one that's sitting behind are, have put in a lot of work into trying to help, help me get this program developed. I think it's something good for the community. I think it's something that, that opens the eyes of the youth in, in, you know, in the politician world, and, and I think it's something that's gonna gear us up to hopefully future, you know, future mayor, future council people, and, and people get involved in the cities with more knowledge and knowing how everything works. I think it would be an eye-opening thing for, for the high school and get people really, you know, integrated in with city politics. We talked about, you know, being, collaborating, coming, you know, their hours and all that within the city, so, you know, we could go with, you know, directors and, and help them understand how everything works. But I move to support this, this mayor's ambassadors. Ms. Montiel, do you have something?
Yeah, the, um, boys and girls, I'm gonna suggest that you present this to this, the school district. I, I think we talked about that, and you, you can touch with the superintendent and of course your principal, so they can all be on board and, and share the presentation with them. I'm sure they'll embrace it, but it's always good to stand, you know, be on the same page and get the same information. Okay? Great job. Thank you, you guys.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bonilla, could be, good idea.
You mentioned the budget, travel. Are you gonna come before Mayor and Council at a later date, or are we doing it now as far as our, our support? Will it be financial, or what are we looking at this? Or is this just a presentation at this time?
Right, right now, it's basically a presentation. I think we could discuss, you know, like these, these young people have, are already on the latter stage of their school year. I was talking to them about definitely try and get them a t-shirt or something to represent the city, you know, maybe, you know, a backpack or something, notepad or something, you know, and that's something that we could discuss, you know, with, with us, the council, as to, you know, we have the League of Cities or city and towns down in August in Tucson. It's up to, to us if we could, you know, invite them and, and help them with any expenditures. I need to, you know, I think we gotta look into, into League of City and Towns as to what they expect or what, what are the requirements to have these, you know, ambassadors to present or be part of it. But I think that, you know, those things are something that we, we could look coming forward.
I agree. I think it's better that we prepare for it to be successful and, and not fail, so we better cross our Ts and dot our Is, get the program rolling.
Yes, but, you know, I, with, with I said, I, you know, I move to support this, this, and, you know, we could leave the, you know, the expense and all that aside to further, further discussion, you know, look, once we get a little bit more information of, from the league and all that, and, but I would like to ask for the support of the council and move to support this, and, you know, at least start with, you know, the, a t-shirt or something for them so they can pay, pay off for the, the work they've done so far. pay, pay off for the, the work they've done so far.
Second.
Now, the second, any more discussion? Uh, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, huh?
Thank you, and thank you for your service.
Oh.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, discussion item number three, discussion direction and possible action. Authorizing the expenditures of a budget authority and amount to not exceed 562,620 of ARPA funds for two parks and recreation department. For two parks, for parks. Okay, two funds for two parks, uh, Parks and Recreation Department LED lights project and a bathroom remodeling project. Second, uh, Ms. Travis, can you please give us a little bit of details on this? Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, the, what it breaks down to is we would be retrofitting the lights at Turley Field and at Fletcher One. Fletcher Two's already been completed, um, to LED lights and putting them on the control switch link so that we can control it, uh, from the phone or from a computer to turn on and off the lights. Additionally, the bathrooms at Anza are the ones we're talking about, making them ADA compatible. The bathrooms are very old. Uh, we'd be creating that space that's currently used for bathrooms into a storage unit and making the bathrooms along the wall in front of the racquetball court so that they are ADA compatible. Since we are making that park entirely ADA compatible, we want to ensure the bathrooms are as well.
Any questions, uh, Mr. Gracia, Councilwoman Gracia?
Uh, you mentioned here ARPA funds. Are these funds that have already been allocated to you or are we moving other funds?
No, these are the funds that were allocated to Parks and Rec.
Anybody else? Ms. Montella?
Yeah.
Councilwoman Montella?
Um, thank you. I just have one more, you know, he, he asked the, the question. So, these are ARPA monies from the second round of ARPA monies. And just for the community to know that these ARPA monies are being used to improve these, these parks, which all people use, all the community uses in Southern Chris County and people when they come and use the field. So, uh, that's a great way to, to use these ARPA funds. Thank you.
Thank you for your support.
And just for everybody to know, uh, Ms., Ms., uh, Travis, uh, I made the question to you, uh, in an earlier meeting yesterday, uh, you know, so everybody understands, you know, some people might say, well, Turley, Turley already has lights, uh, Fletcher One already has lights. Uh, could you just give us a little explanation on what's the difference that's, it's gonna make, you know, to put these lights and, you know, and, and difference of the lights that we have plus in costs?
Yes.
That will be, should, should save.
Absolutely. Um, one, the lights are very old. They are still on halogen gas. So, uh, it does increase the cost of our light bills. Putting in the LEDs will save us in the long run as well as being able to possibly in the future lower the cost that we charge when they rent the field because the lights are not, are as expensive with electricity bills either. So, it's not taking down the poles. It's just retrofitting the bulbs so that we're putting in the LED lights.
Before everybody's understand, it is just the, the light fixtures and, and all that. That's gonna be exchanged. Okay. How much of this, of this, uh, 562 do you think it's lighting and how much it would be to the bathrooms?
I can break down all three for you. For Fletcher One, the cost is 283,720. For Curly, it's 174,000. And then for the bathrooms, it's 53,702 dollars.
Okay, yes, Councilman Doyle.
Thank you. I, I guess the question I have is aside from the savings, uh, as far as, uh, the illumens or the lighting itself, will that actually increase in the fields? It'll?
Yes, it'll be brighter. Yeah, it'll be brighter and clearer as well as, for example, our Fourth of July event. If we have to turn off the lights for the fireworks, they come on immediately because we give them a time of 25, 30 minutes that the lights are off. So, when we turn on the switch, they turn on. But if we were to have an emergency needed to turn on the lights right away, they weren't, they're not gonna turn on right away because the gas has to refill, it cools off and it has to heat up again.
So, I guess so. It's actually also a safety factor.
Absolutely. It's a safety.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. We'll bring back the contracts at, at our next meeting as well.
Okay, April 5th? In April?
April 5th, 6th?
Okay, all right. Any more discussion? Okay, well, as I said, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Item four, this discussion and possible action regarding scheduling a city manager performance evaluation and establishing procedures for such. Okay. Do I have a second? Okay, if you could see your packages, uh, this item was created and, you know, this evaluation was thoroughly looked in through legal. And, uh, basically, the, it's just to get, um, you know, our own City of Nogales evaluation sheet. Uh, that, you know, one, you know, right now, we, we looked at, uh, that's it, we put city manager, but it could be for other, other, uh, department heads or whatever we wanna evaluate. But, uh, with this, um, you know, we're gonna, the thing is to approve the form and then come back and, and, uh, and, you know, do the evaluation individually. Basically, everybody's gonna get a form, get a, get a copy of the evaluation. You'd, you'd find, you fill it out and then we would, uh, discuss it. Um, you know, um, I don't know if you guys have seen the form and looked at it. Uh, but, uh, I think it's very thorough and goes through pretty much general, you know, I think pretty much general A to C on performance and, 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 uh, you know, communication. It's got, uh, external relations. It's got, uh, uh, characteristics. I'm going out backwards, uh, internal administration relationship, uh, election member, uh, relationship. So, you know, we would, uh, give it on a, on a ratings structure, you know, five being outstanding, four being, uh, commendable, uh, three proficient, two provisional and one unsatisfactory. And then, you know, uh, like I said, we could, you know, we'll discuss it and come, uh, come, uh, you know, whenever you guys wish to do the evaluation. Uh, but right now, it's basically approving the form. Um, is there anybody else that has a comment on this?
I, I didn't catch right now. He said, Mayor, was this, uh, form made by legal and, and HR?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
But I don't wanna take all the credit for it. I had a lot of help, Councilman Montella on, on this. So, no, this is, this is, uh, it, it was reviewed by everyone, HR, myself. Um, and we're establishing just the procedure. Now, the dates as to when you're going to do all this is still open. But as far as the procedure and the form that you're going to use, that's what's, uh, up for approval or nonapproval right now.
Councilman Gracia?
I just wanna make sure that we clarify that this evaluation is strictly for people that we oversee, which would be the city manager, city attorney, city clerk, magistrate. And I think that's it. We do not, uh, evaluate, yes.
That's correct.
He does. We cannot evaluate any director.
Magistrate too?
Well. The charter says that the magistrate serves at the pleasure, but there's also other requirements that apply, special requirements or special prohibitions that apply specifically to the, to the magistrate and the judiciary uh, in order to assure that they're independent branch and aren't affected by any of the politics and so on. So, so the answer is yes and no, you know. Y- y- yes, you can evaluate them, but what you can do with that evaluation is kinda limited.
So, in, in this form, in its general structure, would it apply to those positions that I specifically named?
Well, you could with, uh, you could, it would probably, yes, apply to any of the other positions.
Because if we're, if we're adopting a form, let's just make it a, a generic form. So, we have, uh, form for evaluating all the people that we are obligated to do and we should be doing.
Y- you could accept that. Um, the reason I would hesitate to do that, um, Councilman, is because there are certain things that the city manager is, for example, responsible for. Um, and, and I would not be responsible for. So, the form may might be a little bit different for myself and the clerk and who else answers to you directly. So, you know, it's, it's not hard to, to bring back to you another form that is specific to that, to the positions. That, that's how I would recommend that you do it rather than have a general form because it may not be that applicable.
It's a good answer.
But that's, that's your call.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yeah. Mr. Montella, if you recall, everybody had the opportunity to give us feedback on the evaluation. Um, do you remember? Just to, I just wanna make sure it's on record that all the council members and mayor had the opportunity to give us feedback on the evaluation instrument.
Sure. The, the procedures there, the evaluation procedures.
Yeah, I just, yeah.
Yeah, it, it would be, um, the forms would be given to everyone. The forms, you would make out your individual evaluations. They would be returned then to HR. Those evaluations would be then provided to the, to the person being evaluated, uh, for their response. And then we would schedule an executive session and then you would have a, a one-to-one in executive session, uh, evaluation and chance to, to talk and go over their respective evaluations.
Any other questions? So, um, all in favor of approving this, uh, form for evaluation? And like I said, uh, thank you for clarifying, Mr. Gracia. Yes, uh, we do not evaluate the directors, uh, but, you know, um, that, that goes by through the city manager. And then, uh, so all in favor to, to approve this form right now for, for, uh, city manager?
And procedures.
And procedures, evaluation procedures, um, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number six, liquor license. Consideration and possible action of liquor license 2023 dash one. Approval of recommendation of the issuance of a special event liquor license application for Mr. Jose Antonio Vazquez for Culture Arts Committee for a fundraiser May 6th, 2023. Second, um, who's this administration? One question that I had, uh, any discussion? You had something that's administration?
No, that's just me. It's coming from administration.
Okay, uh, just one question, Ms. Lopez, and I know that, does this have to do with the Cinco de Mayo festivals and all that?
Yes.
Okay, and, and my question is, is, is this just in general for the, for the whole event? Or are you giving opportunity to others to, you know, for your function? Uh, sorry, I was not in the meeting, in your meeting, so that, that's why I, I like to see if you could give me some information.
The, the liquor license, uh, it's only to one organization. And the Aztec riders are the ones that are gonna be selling liquor. We have vendors and it's open to the public, but only one is responsible for the liquor license.
And that was selected by a committee?
Uh, most of the time, the Aztec riders are the ones that apply for it.
Okay.
We've given the opportunity to whoever wants it, then nobody wants to work, to be honest.
I know how that feels. Okay, now, I just wanna make sure that, you know, we're, we're, we're open to everybody.
Yes.
Okay?
It's open.
Yes.
Anybody, but we've been asking everybody on different events and, like I said, nobody wants to work.
Okay, so, any other discussion? Go ahead.
Question, uh, Councilwoman, uh, Lopez, uh, what, what percentage of the, of the beer sales are they, are they giving to your, to the, uh, culture arts?
They're supposed to give 20% according to the law, but I asked them not to give anything back. They need the money because they help a lot of organizations. So, they need the money and it's not, we're talking about $400. That's what they'd usually get on, on any event. That's a profit, which is nothing. So, they're giving nothing to the cultural arts. They were supposed to give 20%, but I don't think it's fair. If they are working for it, give us 20%. I don't, we don't need it. They need it.
That, that's fine, uh, but, uh, it's not 20%, it's 25%.
Okay, 25%. Even though 25 is nothing.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Uh, item number seven, orders, consideration and possible action of order 2023 dash zero three, dash zero one, two. An order of the council of the City of Nogales, Arizona approving use of $150,000 of American Rescue Plan Act ARPA funds to assist in purchase of two new ambulances.
So moved, Mayor.
Discussion. Go ahead, uh, Councilman Doyle, turn on your mic.
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Uh, um, well, uh, for 150,000 for two, uh, for two ambulances, it seems like, are they stripped? What, what comes with it? What kind of ambulances are we getting? That's my question.
Mayor?
Go ahead, um.
That's just.
Mr. Dickey?
It, it's just a portion of the total cost. The ambulances are quite a bit more than that.
Oh, okay.
It's just one of the only things that ARPA funds can be used for in the fire department. So, what this does, uh, in the packet, it opens up and frees up other funds to buy a lot of equipment for safety, um, things that they need. It just opens up and gives them more money to purchase things that they need by using the ARPA funds to help pay for the ambulances. The money that would have been paid, used to pay for the ambulances now can be used to pay for a lot of things that they just didn't have the money for.
Since we're on that subject, uh, Mr. Dickey, so when they equip those ambulances, is there a special place that, uh, I mean, do they get the best deal or how, how do they work that?
I can ask Chief, uh, come up.
Sergeant, can you please come up? Thank you.
And address this if you don't mind.
Good evening. I didn't hear the question back then. I'm sorry.
Well, uh, the question, uh, would be, uh, when you purchase, uh, those ambulances and I guess there's a lot of equipment that needs to be added on. I don't know, do they come stripped and then you add on the equipment? Or is there a place where you get a better deal in equipping them? So, that'll serve, uh, the community's needs and the department?
So, the gurneys came with the ambulances. Um, we've had those since August of last year. Um, can't remember if it was last fiscal year or the year before, we bought additional heart monitors. So, we already had those in. heart monitors, so we already had those in place. So the equipment that needs to be put in there right now, we just installed the computers and the Knoxbox key safes in the last couple of weeks. The radios were already purchased through other capital requests. So the equipment that's only left is the EMS supplies, and we buy those in bulk through one of two different vendors.
Well, thank you for that explanation. So this money that's being asked for is then just to finish off paying for that added or additional equipment?
No, essentially what it is, is it offsets the cost of the ambulance purchase, and the money, the $150,000, goes towards purchasing other safety items. We gave a list to the city manager back in, I think it was November, when the ARPA money first was kind of split up into different departments, a kind of preliminary list. We have a meeting on Monday morning with the captains and the heads of the special teams, assuming this passes, to talk about what we're going to do, and then we're going to meet with the city manager after that and kind of list it out for his approval before we do anything.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, everybody understand that, you know, these are the two new ambulances, right?
Yeah.
These are the two new ambulances that we received, what, two, three weeks ago?
Yeah, about two weeks ago. They're over there by the bank right now. We're looking for...
So those are the ambulances are gonna, you know, it's basically the last payment being deferred and switched to ARPA money, and so we could buy equipment and all that?
I'm assuming Gene's gonna make a journal entry.
Any other questions?
Yeah, Mayor, just, just council will get an update. Every time we encumber or spend or approve, I'll send an update of where we're at with ARPA funds, what we have left and what's been spent and everything like that.
Okay. Any other questions for the sergeant?
No.
All right. Thank you, Chief. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Order number two, consideration and possible action of order 2023-03-013, an order of the city council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, authorizing the Nogales Police Department to donate surplus police equipment to the city of Nogales Sonora Police Department. Councilman Bonillas.
Thank you, Mayor. The equipment that is, the surplus equipment here is just, I think, Chief, was it 15 vests? Use 14 used vests that we will be donating to officers in Nogales Sonora. Most of these officers, even though it's only 14, you know, something is something. They don't have any, they don't have any protection. They're just, they just have their blue shirt and they're patrolling, they're out there at night, so we have these extra that, basically, that we're gonna be recycled. So I'd rather give them out to the Nogales Sonora Police Department. They would have better use for them. And I need your support, Mayor and Council, for this.
Councilman Doyle.
Yes, I think Councilman Bonillas' remarks on that are actually good for the whole community, keeping good relations with our, not only neighbors, but sometimes they have supported us in the past, from the fire department, from the PD department, and it's always good to have good relations, especially when we have surplus equipment that's going to be wasted, really, if, where they can really utilize and hopefully, you know, doesn't come to that point, but if it can save a life, well, I think we're doing a great work for that.
Councilman Gravias.
I just have a quick question legally. These vests are probably expired or near expiration. Is there any liability to us by turning them over?
No, and that's how I prepared the order, so specific findings that they don't have any value to us, if we don't do this, they're going to be returned and destroyed and so on. So I made sure that the order has all the necessary findings so that it is not a gift of public property.
Any other discussion? And the only, the one thing, Chief Berberas, I wanted to clear up, you know, these are vests that we are not using or utilizing or need in our department right now, correct?
Mr. Mayor, that is correct. These are vests that we've been putting together for the last couple of years, two, three years. They're surplus vests, they're expired. We don't use them if we don't donate them. All we do is turn them over to a Kevlar recycling plant where they recycle them and make more vests. But I agree with Councilman Bonillas and Councilman Doyle, I mean, it's, it can save a life.
Yes. Thank you. And, you know, I just want everybody to note that, you know, that we're not taking away from our own security and police officers to give something to somebody else. And it's, thank you for this gesture. Thank you, Mr. Bonillas, for bringing this up, and I think the Nogales Sonora Police Department will, should really appreciate this. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. With any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Who made the motion and seconded?
Nobody made a motion.
Yeah.
Need a motion.
Mr. Bonillas made it, and Mr. Doyle seconded.
Who seconded?
Mr. Doyle.
Seconded.
Mr. Doyle.
Thank you.
Okay, so again, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. All opposed? Motion carries. Order number three, consideration and possible action of order 2023-03-014, an order of the city council of the city of Nogales, Arizona, establishing policy for city council use of city of Nogales credit cards, Mayor Maldonado.
So move.
Thank you. I have a discussion.
I have something, Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Bonillas, Councilman Bonillas.
I believe that we have an existing policy in place already. I don't, I feel very uncomfortable at this moment voting on a different policy when the one that's already, that you wrote, Mr. Machado, a few years ago, is perfectly, perfectly And the reason I don't feel comfortable with this right now, or voting on this, is because on the last, on the previous meeting that we had, I believe Mayor Maldonado asked our finance director to explain away why his expenditures were high, and it caught my attention, and so in investigating, I found out that Mayor Maldonado has a credit card. But we have a policy where mayor should not have a credit card, and we were not informed, council wasn't informed, that mayor had a credit card. And so when I asked for the, for his expenditures, there are things that I need to, that I need and council need to be explained as to why, which I'm not going to go into because it's going to be an agenda item for the next meeting. So I don't feel comfortable at this moment implementing a new policy when we first, when there's one already. And we were not aware, council members were not aware that Mayor Maldonado had a credit card when he shouldn't have, unless we had approved it prior, but at this moment, I do not think that we should be voting on a new policy until we get some answers on the next meeting on some of these expenditures. And then I, then I would feel comfortable in approving this new policy, because the one you wrote, Mr. Machado, is pretty good. I don't think we need a new one.
But just to clarify, though, the policy that we have in place doesn't cover what this policy proposes to do.
I understand that, Mr. Machado. I understand that perfectly.
Councilman Doyle.
Well, I can see the point of view addressing the mayor's usage, but I think this new policy is for the whole council to be able to use?
It's not mandatory, but the way the policy is written, each council member makes that determination whether they want a credit card separate to your, to you and your, and your budget, and that would be, that would be accounted for separately, I imagine, through the accounting. So you'd have, you'd have individual budgets, as you do now, and that credit card would apply to those expenditures.
And of course, there'd be clear accountability.
Yes, sir.
From each council person.
Yes, sir.
Well, in that case, I like the idea because I think one time, Mr. Machado, you had to bail me out personally, because they wouldn't accept my credit card, and I tried to use a debit, and they wouldn't accept the debit. So the other thing is, places that they do accept the debit, they tie your debit card up. Now, if we had a city card that at least that we can hold, say, the rooms, the lodging, when we're out of town, then we can use our debit to pay or other, whatever it is they accept after our stay. But usually, you need a credit card that they'll accept for you to get in to the room. And that's what happened that time, when luckily you were there, and you pulled out that, whatever it was, American Express, but they took your card, and then later you got reimbursed for that. But, yeah, it can be a problem for us when we're traveling, and, you know, they question either our cards or, but usually, I think most of the time, or at least with a combination, they'll accept one, we won't have to sleep in somebody else's room or in the lobby. So, yeah, I'm for it, and as long as there's clear accountability, I'd see that everything's fine, and I don't think the issue with the mayor has anything to do with the rest of the council. That's something that's totally different.
I have something to say, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
May I just remind, Mayor and Council, the year of 2009, 2010, how that whole credit card fiasco ended for the city of Nogales, and that's what we have.
I refuse to get compared.
Well, I don't know if you were here.
I know, but I heard it at the, but there's no need to do any comparison.
So, well, I don't know about that, but it didn't end well. It didn't, it didn't end well. I don't think we need to relive an issue like that. I don't think it's a good idea for elected officials to have any type of credit card. It's not necessary. It hasn't been done so in many years, and I don't think it's a, it's a good idea for any elected official to have any type of credit card or P-card, however you want to address it. We shouldn't be having those cards at all.
Thank you. Ms. Lopez Mendez.
Well, I'll agree. I don't think we have, nor we need a credit card, to be very honest. The hotel right now requests a card. Last time Letty was the one that backed up with a credit card for that, because they were asking for an additional card just in case. We don't need really, Mayor, a credit card. We're responsible for our own, we knew since the beginning that was not a privilege. We were never told that we were going to get a credit card, we were going to get mileage allowance, nor nothing. I mean, we're here and we know what we can get, but I don't think it's a good idea for any of us to have a credit card. Thank you.
Mr. Bates, Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Machado just clarified a little while ago that it's an option that we have, you know, we don't have to get a credit card if we don't want to. So if you decide that you don't want one, so you don't, you don't get one.
Mr. Councilman Gravias.
I just want to make sure that we're not circumventing our existing travel policy by implementing this new one, and that it falls within the guidelines. And if it does, I agree that it does have checks and balances, but I have a concern that on the last line, it says, not the last line, but item five, council members issued credit cards shall be personally responsible and liable for all amounts improperly incurred on the card, and that we will bring them to council. Or actually, it says, council members shall present the city council at each council's regular scheduled monthly meeting a review, which is a great, checks and balances, I agree with that, but the wording council, I want to make sure that includes the mayor and it's not just council, because on the line one, it says the mayor and city council. It's just the verbiage, but I just want to make sure that we're all covered.
Yes, the charter specifically defines city council as the five, the six members plus the mayor. So there, when you say city council, it's understood it's all seven members.
So realistically, I think this would provide a little better checks and balances and give us the opportunity to check up on each other. If you so choose to obtain a card.
Or use it.
It makes it stricter than the existing policy, as long as we're not violating the travel policy.
If I can clarify that, the use of the credit card does not change what becomes a proper expenditure. Whatever the proper expenditure is under the travel policy and existing public purpose law, you can use the credit card. Anything other than that would not be, of course, proper. It doesn't change anything. The credit card doesn't change anything.
Well, with that, Mr. Mayor, I have the mic. Okay. With that said, is there, is there something wrong with the way our PO system works, the way the expenditures are done, the way, the way it works, the system that we have in place right now? Is this, is it flawed?
Well, you're asking me...
I'm asking Mr. Dickey.
Oh.
I think we've been able to do things appropriately, and I don't think they're flawed. I think the reason here is just circumstances and the situation, and I think that'd be better explained, maybe if the mayor wanted to explain it or...
What circumstances?
Well, just, can, I'm sorry, I don't like to interrupt like this, but honest, I think I know where you're going. It's not a matter of whether the system is flawed or whether I agree with it or he agrees or with it. It's actually a decision that this council makes. Whether the decision is flawed and you want to change it, that's your decision. Whether you think it's flawed and you want to leave it alone, that's up to you.
Well, it's because what's odd, what is odd, is that we've had this policy for, since 2010, Mr. Machado? We've had three administrations since then, hasn't been an issue. Now it's an issue. Now I find out that he, the mayor has a credit card, and we weren't told. And now all of a sudden, well, we have a new policy, and I know that you're saying it has nothing to do with the issue that I've been raising, but again, I don't see the need today or tonight to vote on this. I don't see it necessary until we get a better understanding of what, of what's going on with the expenditures and everything. I believe that the policy in place is the correct one. I see no need, I see no need for any elected official to have any type of credit card or P-card. It hasn't been done so, Mr. Councilman Doyle, you didn't have one when you were mayor. None of us have ever had a credit card, and I know it's optional, I know that we can pick to have one or not, but I don't think it's a good idea.
Okay, thank you for your opinion. Councilwoman Montilla.
So I'm getting the impression, and we're giving the impression to the public and the dais, that Mayor George Maldonado has a credit card. Like, I have my own credit card, it's Lisa Montiel. Does he have his own credit card that he uses?
No, he does not.
Thank you.
What was that, Councilwoman?
Well, I'm not going to repeat it.
The question was whether or not Mr. or Mayor Maldonado has a credit card issued by the city in his own name. The answer is no.
Councilman Doyle.
Yes, thank you. Well...
Well, in my administration, yeah, I was left out in the cold a couple of times because of that same reason. And nobody loaned me the credit card except that time Mr. Machado was kind enough to bail me out. But it is a problem. It is a problem nowadays, especially nowadays, that these, a lot of these hotel chains, they'll honor the city card or at least one of the other cards. But if you don't have that card that they honor, then guess what? They won't give you a room. And that's happened to me a few times, I think Mrs. Robinson remembers. And the thing is that with all the guidelines and safeties that this has, well, you know, it's something that I really don't think I'm going to use unless it comes at one of those given moments that I'd rather hold the room with a city card and then pay with my card afterwards and get reimbursed. But at least I know that I'm going to have a place to stay. Because, you know, we don't have a hired lobbyist for the city of Nogales. We're all lobbyists for the city of Nogales. We all work for the city. When we go and do our networking and we'll go and talk to different people and congressmen and persons throughout the state, we're lobbying for Nogales. We're trying to bring funds for Nogales, a lot more than what we spend going out there. And if you paid a professional lobbyist, you'd spend a lot more than what all of us do here on this council. So we should be treated with a little more respect instead of having to be demeaned out there in some public hotel that they don't take our credit card or something because for whatever reasons. I think the city should support us and back us up, at least with a credit card, where we can hold a room. And then if we make that expense on it, well, we come and clarify it here at the next regular meeting. And if not, we don't have to explain it. We just, the city gets reimbursed, or the card wasn't used, and we pay for the room with our other credit card once we finish our business over there. So that's the way I see it. And yes, it can be a... It does become a problem for some of us. And I don't care to be, sometimes I don't care I'm going on trips because, hey, nobody likes to be embarrassed in front of other people, you know? So that's my point of view.
I just need clarification from what Mr. Machado answered right now. Councilwoman asked you if mayor has a credit card with his name. We all know, Mr. Machado, that it's not going to have his name, but he does have a credit card from the city. Because I, before your answer, I have it here where he signed it out.
I'm aware of that. And I know that's an issue that you put on for the next agenda, and that's going to be discussed at that agenda. But as far as what's before us today is very specific and doesn't address that agenda.
I understand, but it was, right now, it was addressing the matter or it was painted as that his card doesn't have his name. That's kind of irrelevant at this point. If it has his, if it doesn't or doesn't have his name, it doesn't matter.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman.
I have here two copies of a purchasing card user agreement. One with your name and the other one with Judith Armendaris. So there's two cards, and you sign an agreement. And you're saying you don't have a card?
I'm not saying I don't.
As I understand it, and they can explain it, it's one card, each department is issued a card to make purchases in accordance with their...
A credit card.
A credit card, a credit card to the department. For example, it would be the mayor's office has a credit card.
It does have a... Yeah, that's the only thing. They're saying you don't have a credit card. You do have a...
I did not say it.
No, the question was in his name. The credit cards that are existing now, the only ones in, according to the policy authorized, would be the city manager and...
And Letty.
Deputy City Manager.
And the city clerk. The only two city credit cards where names appear on it. The other credit cards are the city of Noales, and they are cards used for purchasing within each department. So like, the planning, zoning has one, the recreation has one.
Even, yeah, I understand, but even though the name, it's not in the credit card, but they're responsible for those two credit cards. So they do have a credit card?
No, yes, yes, they have a credit card, yes.
Okay, that's the only thing I wanted.
Yeah, no, 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 I'm not trying to... But the question was more specific. If there was a credit card issued in his name in violation of this policy, in his name, that, my understanding, from what I've been told, that's not the case.
So these two cards can only be used by him and her? That's it? So they are there, it's their credit card?
Mr. Dickey, can you clarify that?
Just to clarify a little bit, there's just one card. They both signed it because there's times when maybe Judy, his assistant, will need to go get something like the meal or something, you know, for council or whatever.
And they're responsible for these credit cards?
So that's why she was, that's why we had her sign.
Authorization of use.
Uh-huh, but you could sit wherever you want.
As long as it's city business, yes. And approved, that's true. Mr. Gómez.
Yes, Mayor, my question then, now that's getting interesting, is how many directors have a credit card? I mean, when they go and, so when they go and travel, they can use a city card? Who pays for their lodging?
No, absolutely not. The credit cards that are issued for each department are for purchases are for purchases made that have to be made in the department for supplies, for whatever authorized purchase under your budget are. For example, I need a stationery for the office, right? There's people who sell stationery will not accept a purchase order from the city. They will not accept that you, that, send us a bill and we'll pay you. They won't accept that. There's many places where you've got to give them a credit card. And in those situations, the finance department is made aware of this, and they okay the use of the credit card. It's not, and it's not used for travel.
And just to follow up on that real quick, if it's related, is that that takes away, they were using petty cash. This is a lot safer and a lot better checks and balances to have a credit card. So there's no petty cash now. So the cards are a low, it's a low, whatever you call it, limit. And it's basically, and they call it a P-card for purchasing card. It is a credit card, but it's a purchasing card, and I think there's a certain limit on it. It's just, it's made it, it just get away from petty cash. It's one of the reasons that they did that.
So my question then is, as far as what you've seen, it's a credit card is a safe means of protecting, of protection for the city and for the user, as long as used appropriately. And if it's not, then because we're going to be bringing it up to the council on a regular basis, a monthly, the regular monthly meeting, no, that's okay. But then they're responsible, if there's any impropriety use of it, they're responsible legally to pay back for any amount of money that wasn't legally used, I guess, or appropriately used.
That's correct, and that's the point I was trying to make, Councilor Gómez. The checks and the balances in the procedure. And I'm not giving an opinion one way or the other.
No, right.
Do it or prove it or not approve it. I'm just telling you that the way it was written was specifically to emphasize that there's checks and balances and that the card is used with existing city travel policy.
Actually, what I see right now, that this protocol or this way of doing it has much less safeguard than the previous one. So I think, like I mentioned before, we are legitimate lobbyists for the city of Nogales. And if we go out of the city where we need to use lodging and whatnot, then, you know, we're going to give a report of it after we get back. But at least we're not going to be left out in the cold. And that's my point, that I think this is a good system.
Thank you, Councilman Gómez.
I'm a big proponent of oversight, and I think this would give us oversight. I just need some clarification. Accounting manual, section two cash, says the Wells Fargo card may be used for travel. Some people have said you can't use it for travel. So let's make sure we get that on the same page. The other thing is, this policy or order that we vote on today does not encumber coming back to the beginning of the year. It starts today and forwards. Any purchases made before that fall under the old policy.
That's correct.
And then the other thing was... Signing for a card is your legal statement that you are responsible for any purchases that you made that may not fall under policy?
Yes, the finance has a pretty good form in connection with that, that whoever signs for the card is responsible for the expenditures on the card. But more importantly, it's part of the order of this council, if that's what they want to do.
And all we're doing today is the actual policy, nothing retroactive, nothing else?
That's correct.
And last one. Just to make it clear, Mr. Machado, is, well, from what I understand and from experience, there's nothing different that Mayor Maldonado is doing that other previous administration did, has done. For example, bought T-shirts and, because I've gone into the open books, you know, it's public information. And all the purchases that are there might, some mayors might spend more than others, but the fact of the matter, they're given a budget, they're given an allowance. And so we have a finance director that I'm sure is on top of it. So if this mayor, for example, in this case, overspends, then I'm sure that they're like, there's safeguards, and there's people like the finance director that will be notifying him immediately. But there's nothing different that has gone on in the past. I mean, we have, you know, if you see some of us are wearing the city shirts, that was bought by public funds, okay? And there's a budget for the council members and mayor too that's given to them at the beginning of the year, fiscal year. So if someone is in the opinion that the mayor's spending a lot, well, he just came in in January. And if he's done with his budget and he has used it all up, he's done. He's done with it. Because we're all given, we are all given a budget so the public can know for traveling, all of us, for buying shirts and so forth. And so I am sure that's why we have an attorney, that I see where he's coming from, where he's wanting us to, where he put it forth so that we can vote on it or not vote on it, so that we can be accountable for the budget that's been given to us from the very beginning. Thank you.
Councilman Gómez.
Remember what I was going to ask. There's a memo here from city manager dated March 10, 2023, where he states that he met with the finance director and you. And because of the traveling, they decided that they should issue you a card regardless. I just want to make sure that is done in accordance and it didn't have to come before mayor and council before. Or if it was on the up and up, then I'm okay.
As far as I know, everything was on the up and up, you know? I believe this policy, the one before you now, is going to create, it's going to eliminate a lot of those gray areas, you know? And the use of the previous credit card for this and that. This is very specific to the council. There won't have, there won't be any more question after this. If that's what you decide to do, you can use it. You can use it for very specific purposes, and that's it. And the other credit cards are governed by a different policy regarding purchasing for departments. Trying to eliminate the gray area. So it's black and white. But again, that's your decision, not mine.
So I want to ask what Councilman Gómez just asked you on that memo that Mr. Dickey gave me. So you're saying that he, that Mayor Maldonado was not in violation when he got that card back in January 10, I believe? Are you saying that because none of us knew?
I am saying that that is not clear, Mr. Bonilla. That's, number one, it has nothing to do...
Well, if it's not clear, why was the card given to him?
Again, there's very few things that are absolutely clear. You can get them as clear as you can try, possibly can. That's what I'm trying to do here. That's an option you guys, you, the council has. You don't have to take the option. You can leave it as...
I'm not talking about this policy. I'm talking about the January 10, when he was approved, when he was given. I understand, Mr. Machado, that it's not retroactive. That's perfectly fine. But what I'm trying to get is, what I am, what I am not comfortable is that the whole discussion is that when the credit card was given to the mayor, and if the vote goes through, then it goes through. But when the credit card was given to the mayor, none of us knew. And I'm asking you, wasn't that against policy? You wrote the policy, Mr. Machado.
No, I didn't write the policy.
Oh, you didn't, you didn't, we didn't, didn't you and I talk about it?
Mr. Gómez, please.
I didn't write this policy. This is a policy and accounting manual that was adopted by council. Yes, I reviewed it, and I reviewed all those provisions in it. But I didn't write this policy. I'm sure there was portions in there that I modified and so on. But I'm not trying to avoid your question. But as I indicated previously, those things that you're asking are things that you have requested be addressed in the next agenda. So what I'm saying is, as far as this discussion and in keeping with the open meeting law and how we're supposed to limit things to items on the agenda, that's as far as I'm willing to go, that those items will be discussed.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I have just one question. I recall on the last meeting, you mentioned that they had increased your budget already. Am I wrong?
Yes. What increased was the expenditures, right? That's what, you know...
Well, you increased your budget.
No, it's not the budget. It was, I gave them, basically the public, and I asked Ms. Jean to explain why my percentage of expenses had gone up. And that's when she explained of my travel and all my moving around. That's what I asked.
So you still have a budget, right?
Yes, same budget, same budget. All that has not changed.
Or you still have it?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. All that has not changed. Yes, no problem.
And, Mayor?
Go ahead, Council.
And that's what I was alluding to earlier, that we all have a budget. And you happen to have made a comment that you were spending your budget. Well, yeah, you're spending it, but once you reached your cap, you're done, from what I understand, from your last statement. Yes, thank you.
Obviously, you know, I think the format would be come to mayor and council and look for another solution, or I just sit in my desk. But, you know, it was a transparent way for me to show that everybody, you know, hey, you know, I've been moving, and I asked our finance director to explain why that item percentage had been increased because of my moving around and lobbying for the city. Ms. Jean, is that the way we... Thank you. Yes, the budget is the same. Okay.
Mayor, I call for the vote for this order number to be approved, 2023-03-014, for the credit card policy.
Okay. Want to do a roll call?
Yes, please.
Let's do a roll call. I'll start, Letty, with an aye. Vice Mayor?
Aye.
Councilwoman? Councilman Gómez?
Sorry, aye.
Gómez?
Aye.
And Mendez? Mr. Gómez, Council?
Aye.
Mr. Bonilla?
Nate.
Motion passes. Cory Carrié, thank you. Item number eight, we didn't put no future agenda items. I guess we didn't put it, so I move to adjourn this meeting. Second, all in favor? All opposed?